Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning requests, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the city 2015 land use plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
I'll start by reading the consent agenda items. Item number one is approval of the December 3, 2008 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three is a rezone from the RS1 residential district to the RS2 residential district for allowed uses at South Tuscan Club Circle. Item four is a rezone from AG Agriculture District to the RC Recreation Conservation District, RS2 Residential District, RD Residential District, and the Briarwood Estates Plan - South Plan Development District at the northeast corner of E-69th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item five is a conditional use permit in the RA1 residential district to allow an off-site parking lot at 13th Street and Kiwanis Avenue. Item six is a minor amendment in Subarea B of the River Crossing Plan Development District to allow a six-foot fence in the front yard setback at 5,027 South Western Avenue. Item seven is a minor amendment in Subarea A of the Interstate Crossing Plan Development District to allow an increase in the size of freestanding sign at 5,400 South Solberg Avenue. Item eight is a final development plan in Subarea B of the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to allow construction of a townhouse project at northeast corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item nine is a final development plan in Subarea B of the Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to construct townhomes at northeast corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item 10 is a final development plan in Subarea A of the Willow Creek Plan Development District to construct townhomes and accessory garages at West 18th Street and Marion Road. Item 11 is a final development plan in Subarea B of the South Dakota Business Technology Park Plan Development District to construct a building addition to the existing technology business center at 2329 North Krieger Avenue. Item 12 is a major amendment to the preliminary subdivision plan in the RS2 RD RA1 residential districts, O Office District, and C4 Plan Commercial districts for Foss Field Addition for the future development at southwest corner Madison Street and Potterhouse Road. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who would like any of those moved to the regular agenda? If not, any planning commissioners? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda is approved. We'll then move to our regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Randall with the City Planning Staff. Staff would like to recommend that items 13, 15, and 20 be deferred from the regular agenda. On item 13, the applicant has requested a deferral to March 4. On item 15, staff is recommending deferral of the item to February 4, and the applicant concurs with that recommendation. And item 20, the applicant has requested deferral to February 4.
So, item number 13, which is a future land use amendment to allow changes in future land uses to reallocate office, commercial, multifamily residential land uses at northwest corner of the intersection at West 54th Street North and North Marion Road, that is deferred to March 4. Item 15 is revised conditional use permit in the I-1 Light Industrial District to allow motor vehicle to supply and sales at 1,700 North Cliff Avenue. That one is deferred to February 4. And item 20 is a final development plan in Subarea D of the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to construct four complexes at South Mary Beth Avenue and 32nd Street. And that one is deferred to February 4. With those changes, is there a motion to approve the revised regular agenda? So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The revised regular agenda is approved. So then, our first item then on the regular agenda is item 14, a special use permit in Subarea A of the Prairie Metals Plan Development District to allow on-sale alcohol establishment at 453 West 69th Street. Staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dave Loveland. I'll be representing the planning staff on this and future items tonight. The applicant is requesting a special use permit in order to obtain a beer and wine license at Black Sheep Coffee, which is formerly Cascata Cafe down at 69th and Minnesota in the Waterfall Plaza. Black Sheep Coffee has purchased Cascata Cafe and is required to obtain that special use permit in order to be able to sell beer and wine, which is an access - they're selling it as an accessory, although we don't have that definition in our zoning code anymore. It's not an accessory so much as it is an on-sale alcohol establishment now. We are recommending approval of the item with two conditions. The first is for - is approval for this applicant only. The second would be that a security management plan should be approved - provided to and approved by the Sioux Falls Police Department. I can take - we have received no opposition to this application, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Dave?
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant here, please?
My name is William Ewing. 453 West 69th Street is the location of our place of business. It's actually Black Sheep Bistro is what we're calling it.
Do you have anything to add?
Just, we're looking to enhance our evening menu. Beer and wine is going to be included with like a pizza and usually with a bistro theme. Wine is one of the main ingredients in a bistro kind of a setting, so that's what we're looking to do.
Okay. Any questions, William? Okay, guess not. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I move to approve with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 14 is approved with the two conditions. Our next item is item 16, a conditional use permit in C2 General Commercial District to allow a church at 4060 South Grange Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Steve Randall, City Planning Staff. I'll be presenting this item and others this evening. The purpose of the application is to occupy an existing vacant structure and facility at the location of 4060 South Grange Avenue. So we're changing uses from commercial to a church in an existing facility along the I-229 right-of-way except for adding parking on the west side of the building and changing the existing signage panels. The existing building appearance, site improvements, and landscaping are to remain the same. Applicants and owners are represented by Lance Wrench, Falls Church, and Gil Hogan Jr., the owner of the facility. It's a 1.9 acre site and currently is vacant. You might remember the building was occupied by a tile company and then we did hear a conditional use at one time to put in an auto body shop for Burnidee, but those projects are no longer in the works and the church is looking to occupy the facility for their use. Conditional use standards are referenced in your report. For churches, these uses shall be located in areas where their impact on adjacent properties would not be detrimental due to their large traffic - sized traffic situation or parking lots, and they shall be designed to minimize their impact on properties of a residential nature through landscaping, setbacks, screening, and appropriate measures. The only residential uses that we have in the immediate vicinity of the project are to the north. There's a nursing home on that side. In the future, 49th Street is going to be realigned to run along the backside of this particular property and will provide adequate separation as an arterial between the residential use and this - and this building. In any event, the parking is going to be located on the south side of the building and accessible from the south. Based on a proposed seating plan and a seating capacity of 298 seats, required parking is 75 spaces, and the site plan indicates parking provided for 84. That includes the additional parking spots that they're going to recover by taking away the loading zone on the west side of the building. The applicants have also indicated that they have discussed arrangements for church overflow parking during those times when there may be a need for additional parking with adjacent commercial parking lots and their neighbors. And perhaps they can report on that to you this evening. The applicant is proposing to provide front yard landscaping along the South Grange Drive and the future alignment of West 49th Street when that project is completed. The application makes a reasonable use of vacated commercial facilities and otherwise conforms to the requirements of the I-229 Design Review District. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a change in occupancy, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, and we've had no calls.
Okay, questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair, Steve, help me. We dealt with a church in a residential neighborhood here, three meetings in a row, and it was explained to us that a church was allowed use in a residential neighborhood. And the only reason that they had to come before us on a conditional use permit was because it was not on a collector or on an arterial street. Can I assume that Grange is at the least a collector?
You could.
Why then does this one have to - why does it need a conditional use permit?
In the zoning ordinance in the C2 Commercial District, churches are indicated as a conditional use.
Because it's in a commercial district?
That's correct.
That's the differential? Thank you, Steve. That one had me a little confused.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Lance Wrench of 3105 South Fernwood Avenue here in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and I'm the lead pastor of this church.
Anything else to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Lance? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item?
My name's Jeff Hayes, and I just have one question about the church. What will the occupancy load sign state in the church?
Steve, do you know the answer to?
I'm not - I don't have that information available. To me, the building services and zoning department will determine the occupancy based on the plans submitted for change in occupancy permit and will establish the occupancy limit at that time. The posted occupancy is what he's referring to.
Mr. Chair, Steve, there's a dramatic difference, though, between the posted occupancy, which is a calculation for exiting and life safety, and the parking calculation, which is a zoning calculation. They do not relate.
That's correct.
Anyone else from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item 16?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 16 is approved. Item 17 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow a retail warehouse at 1612 East 10th Street. Staff report, please.
Purpose of this request is to remodel an existing commercial building for climate control, locker storages for personal items. The applicants and owners are represented by Richard and Thomas Hanson, Hanson Brothers Incorporated. It's a half-acre site. That portion of the site that's being requested the conditional use for is an existing land use of multi-tenant commercial center. The applicant is making improvements to the site, and in the course of making those improvements, they would like to allow this particular use, which under the conditional use standard state, such uses shall be compatible with the neighborhood character and be sited and designed in such a way to minimize their impact on adjacent residential uses. Special attention should be given to the height of the structure, parking and loading areas, traffic generated, noise, lighting, and landscaping. All retail merchandise shall be stored indoors. The applicant has indicated to us that because of the nature of the storage, there is no outdoor storage planned. There is no access to the residential side of the building. The existing building is not changing in its height, and none of the other conditions stated are changing as well. There possibly would be some change of the existing signage. In 2003, his zoning variance was approved to reduce parking requirements to 25 spaces for these tenants only. The parking requirements for storage would be nowhere near that requirement. As I mentioned, there are two buildings on the property. The west building is being remodeled for additional commercial uses, and this particular proposed storage facility is located only in the east building as shown on the site plan, floor plans, and the building elevation drawings provided. Because the application, again, provides clarity to indicate the purpose and nature and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check, again, by zoning and building services prior to obtaining a building permit, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit, and we've had no calls on this application either.
Questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Hi, my name's Rick Hanson. My address is 4,009 South Thunderbird Trail, and I would have very little to add. I think the staff analysis was very thorough. I would reiterate, there will be no outdoor storage at all. Everything would be stored indoors in a climate-controlled, secure atmosphere. In our experience with the climate-controlled storage, that it's very low impact with regard to parking and noise and traffic, et cetera. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Any questions for Rick? Guess not, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience who would care to speak on this item? If not, commission action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of item 17.
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 17 is approved. Item 18 is a conditional use permit in the RS2 Residential District to allow a group home at 4901 and 4903 West 45th Street. Staff report.
Good evening again. The applicant is requesting the conditional use permit to allow a group home that's run by South Dakota Achieve, and that's for the care of handicapped adults. The applicant is Paul Rickert, and he's representing South Dakota Achieve for the site. The site is about point - three tenths of an acre, and the existing land use is a duplex. In your staff report, you notice - you'll note the conditional use standard as we've - as it's been defined by the zoning ordinance. That is that a group home shall be located in such a manner as does not create an undue concentration of these types of uses. Four weeks prior to a city public hearing, the applicant shall conduct a neighborhood informational meeting, which addresses the group home site improvements, building design, and good neighbor components. And if a group home conditional use - conditional use permit is approved in accordance with our zoning ordinance, a written report shall be completed by the applicant to ensure conditional use permit compliance. That report shall be submitted to our - to the planning office not less than 90 days and not more than 120 days after the business operations begin, and another report shall be submitted prior to the one-year anniversary date of business operations. And note that there's a condition on our staff report that I'll get to later that relates to that. To help explain what exactly has occurred to require the group home conditional use permit at this location, they - the South Dakota Achieve constructed the duplex on-site earlier this year, and since then has determined that they would like to add a doorway in between the two units of that - of that structure. Now, our zoning ordinance defines a family as that - as no more than seven handicapped adults can live in one unit without it being considered a group home. And so, because there are eight adults in this location, by adding that doorway, it triggers them into having a one-unit structure then essentially, which pushes them into the group home definition, which requires then the conditional use permit stand - the conditional use permit. So, in order to meet some of the requirements, they have provided - they have provided elevations and structural drawings, and they also have conducted a neighborhood meeting, which myself and Councilman Greg Jamison attended on Wednesday, December 10. There were no neighbors in attendance that were opposed to this, and we have not received any phone calls regarding this application. We are recommending approval because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by zoning and building services, and we are recommending approval with two conditional use - with two conditions on that. The first is for approval for this applicant only, which would be South Dakota Achieve, and the second is for the purposes of the written report as stated under the conditional use standard, the issuance of the building permit for the proposed alteration to the structure shall be considered the commencement of business operations. Because the duplex is already existing and because there are people living in that location right now, we had to - we had to find a moment that we would consider that to be the group home itself then. So, and so we're stating that in the condition it would be the commencement of - or the issuance of the building permit itself. So, there - I have no further comments, but I can answer any questions that you.
Any questions for Dave?
So, the only change, Dave, is the doorway.
That's correct, yep. Yep, they've got eight people there right now. All they want to do is add a doorway so that staff can go in-between for both security and weather-related issues, so.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Hello, Paul Rickert, address 1313 South Dundee Drive, Sioux Falls.
Anything to add?
No, I felt Dave did a good job. Again, I was - if he hadn't brought it out, I would have stressed the importance of the safety and response time, basically, that this will allow - allow the staff members. I was also pleased that just the reaction we've received in the neighborhood from the neighbors, and that's - that's been positive.
Okay. Any questions for Paul? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the group home for South Dakota Achieve.
With the?
With the two stipulations. I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 18 is approved with two conditions. Item 19 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District for development of a site greater than an acre at 5,400 South Highline Avenue. Staff report.
Yeah, the applicant is proposing to construct a retail bank facility for the Sioux Falls Federal Credit Union. The applicant is Larry Crane from Perspective, representing Carla Hanna with the Sioux Falls Federal Credit Union. The site size is 1.17 acres, and the existing land use is vacant currently on that site. The conditional use standard for retail - retail sites greater than an acre is that retailing should be designed in a fashion that will minimize a large amount of parking required on-site. These uses will be encouraged to provide a safe and convenient pedestrian circulation pattern through the parking lot, and further, such uses will be encouraged to develop an attractive site package. We did not receive any signed - signed details prior to tonight's meeting, but I believe the applicant was working on that before tonight's meeting, so. The site plan as provided shows landscaping exceeding the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, including irrigated sod. Thirteen deciduous canopy trees are required, and they provide it 16. Parking provided exceeds minimum standards. 19 spaces required, and they provide it 20. The trash enclosure is located to the north of the building and is shown to be screened with landscaping. The one concern is that the Public Works Department is concerned about the site having three access points. You see one to the north on the north side and then two on the south side. They are asking the applicant to remove either the north access point or one of the south access points. And they should - the applicant should be prepared to address that prior to the plan check of the issuance of the building permit. And the building is constructed using horizontal lap siding on the upper two-thirds of the facade. The lower third of the facade is composed of a brick veneer, and they will utilize quartzite veneer and capstones. And as is stated, that they have not yet provided to our office a signed package for evaluation, but we are recommending approval.
All right, questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Larry Crane, 3405 South Klein Avenue, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Crane, can you address the curb cut issue?
Yes, I can. The three access points on the owner's point of view are trying to separate the circulation of the - of the customers coming into the bank and the drive-through component of that bank. As you may know, the - when the circulations cross, it becomes a big bottleneck. The other component for this, that Highline Avenue, is a future planned five-lane road that limits all access directly out to that side. So then, to get the circulation to work, we couldn't really go to the west. So, the in-and-out component of the drive-through, the two drives on the south, that's what we're requesting for that reason, and then the through - the drive-through component to the north, getting us to the three access points. We understand the staff's concern. We've had several discussions with the staff about that. We can't - I mean, we don't know a good solution at this point for how to get the circulations to go through without having an ability to go to the west.
Larry, the construction has started, so do you have a building permit?
We have a partial building permit.
You just have a footing and foundation plan, so this is going to be resolved as a part of getting the full building permit, isn't it?
Absolutely.
So, I'm not sure this body needs to necessarily do anything. So, lastly, I think it's a very nice-looking building, and being an east sider, I'm looking forward to having some better-looking buildings. forward to having some better-looking buildings on that Airwood Parkway, so, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for Larry?
I would just like to comment that I too think it's a really nice-looking building, and I'm an east sider too, so I totally understand what he's saying.
Our client really went out of their way on this particular building to make it a structure that is an architecturally contributing feature to that east side, because it's becoming a big box neighborhood out there.
Yep.
And they wanted to have something that's more pedestrian scale and fits in with the context, material use, and again, try to promote more pedestrian access to those, those banks, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item nineteen?
I move for approval of item nineteen.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Item nineteen is approved. Item twenty has been deferred until February fourth. Item twenty-one is election of officers for two thousand and nine. The chair will entertain nominations for chair and vice chair for next year.
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate as our officers for next year Pam Brydenbach as chairperson and Jesse Schmidt as full chair.
Okay. There's a motion for Pam as chair and Jesse vice chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. That's all we're going to take for nominations, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Congratulations. Item twenty-two then is adjournment.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I would like to, and maybe some of the other commissioners will join in too, but I want to thank you for serving as our chair for the last two years. You've done an outstanding job, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.